All right, roll call.
Nelson.
Here.
Orison.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Wunschel.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Moriarty.
Here.
Thank you. Item three is the consent agenda. Three A is a motion to approve city council minutes of May seventeen twenty twenty-one. B licenses, approve renewal of class E liquor, class B wine, and class C beer and Sunday sales for Hy-Vee store. Class C beer with Sunday sales for Hy-Vee gas. Class E liquor, class B wine, class B native wine, and class C beer for Fairway store. Class E liquor, class B wine, class C beer, and Sunday sales for Casey's number two-eight-seven-seven at eight oh five South Grand. And class E liquor, class B wine, class C beer, and Sunday sales for Casey's twenty-nine-oh-two at four-eleven West Eighteenth Street, all subject to final approval by the Iowa Alcoholic Beverages Division. C is a resolution authorizing permanent transfer of funds of budgeted transfers for the month ending May thirty-one twenty twenty-one. D is a motion to approve the purchase of a Grasshopper seven-two-nine L.C. mower for the landfill division from Galen's Promo for sixteen thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars. This is a CIP item. E is a motion to approve purchase of Grasshopper seven-two-nine L.C. mower for Cemetery Division from Galen's Promo for fifteen thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars, again a CIP item. F is a motion to approve a quote from Cryer and Blaine, Inc. for the Spencer Public Library HVAC improvements for forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. This is a CIP item as well. G is a motion to approve quote from Woodman Controls Company for the Spencer Public Library for controls upgrade, including HTML upgrade and BAS updates for nineteen thousand five hundred, a CIP item. H is a motion to approve sidewalk construction and assessment agreement with Jacobson Homes Corporation for three-two-two West Fifth Street. I is a motion to approve a request from the Clay County Fair and Event Center to carry over twenty-five thousand dollars due fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Just a quick note that that's already been allocated in the previous fiscal year, it's just a carryover as stated. J is a motion to approve North Star Insulation LLC as a subcontractor for the twenty-twenty-one wastewater treatment plant improvements, phase two. And that concludes the consent agenda. First by Bill.
I'll second.
Second by George. Question or discussion on any of the items? All right, hearing none, vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item four, old business. Four A is an ordinance amending Title IX, Chapter thirteen, Section four N of the Spencer City Code concerning improvements required in connection with a subdivision plat. This is the final filing. First by Donovan.
Second.
I'm gonna give this one to Tom, second by Tom. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Item five, new business. Five A is a resolution appointing Brian Weave as acting city manager for the city of Spencer.
I'll move the...
First by, who was it? Tom.
It's Tom.
Second by George. Discussion? Should be noted in the resolution that this is just the, basically, the powers of city manager that Brian will have. We will need another decision regarding commensurate pay. It's not currently combined in this resolution, but previously, when there's been an interim city manager, there's been an adjustment to pay, and so we'll have that discussion at a later date. We'll set a committee meeting for that, probably committee of the whole. So, this current five A just deals with the authority of being the city manager. Any questions or comments? All right, hearing none, vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item five B is a motion to approve off-street parking and sidewalk agreement and grant of easement with Timothy W. Steffen and Sherri K. Steffen at one fifteen West Seventh Street. First by Lauren. Second by Bill. Any discussion or questions?
Mark, question up there, Mark. Do you see any traffic issues or problems with it? I see you recommended that it go through, and obviously you did not see any problems there.
No, we feel comfortable with it. Part of the process is also to have input from the police department, so Chief Orberton has also looked at it, and we feel that it'll fit the area well, improve the parking, and we don't anticipate any issues.
All right, thanks, Mark.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. We'd like to thank Tim and Sherri for their investment in Spencer. It'll be nice to see that project come a little closer to fruition. Item five C is a resolution approving contract and performance bond for the twenty-twenty-one sewer structure rehabilitation project with Hydro Clean for a hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars. First by George.
Second.
Second by Donovan. Tracy was close. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item five D is a resolution approving contract and performance bond for the twenty-twenty-one PCC patching project with Beck Excavating Incorporated for forty-six thousand seventy-three dollars. This is a quotation project.
I'll make a motion on that.
First by Ron.
I'll second.
Second by Tracy. Well done. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item five E is a resolution approving contract and performance bond for the twenty-twenty-one crack-in joint ceiling project with Midwest Coatings Company for forty-three thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. This is a quotation project. First by Lauren.
I'll second.
Second by George. Discussion on this? Hearing none, vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Five F is a resolution approving contract and performance bond for the twenty-twenty-one intake replacement project with Corey Jurgens Construction LLC for fifty-nine thousand five hundred and ninety-two dollars. First by Tom. Second by Bill. Any discussion or questions on this? There we go. Real quick, are all these in the budget? I mean, have they come in under budget or within our budget?
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, I would say all of these, all these projects that you're acting on tonight were within the budget, except for the two thousand twenty-one sewer structure project. And in that case, we'll just adjust the quantities to fit the budget, so that's, that's pretty much where we're at.
Real quick, Ross, you want to touch on the mechanics of that? So in order to downsize the project, we have to accept it as bid?
Yes, yeah, so we accept it as bid, and then we'll end up change ordering out those quantities, and that language was included in the specifications when the contractor bid the project, so. So they've agreed to that as part of the contract.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Good question, Donovan. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Five G is a resolution awarding contract for the twenty-twenty-one Fourth Street resurfacing project, STBG-swop-seven-one-seven-oh-six-two-nine-SG-two-one, to Blacktop Service Company and subsidiary for six hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-one thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents. The bids were received at the IDOT letting on five eighteen twenty twenty-one. First by Bill.
My second.
Second by Tracy. Any discussion?
How did they come in what they expected?
George? Ross?
Good evening again. Just a quick review, this, this project is on East and West Fourth Street, from Tenth Avenue West over to Fifth Avenue East. We did receive two bids. The low bid was from Blacktop Services, as you see. The other bid was from Heartland Asphalt out of Mason City. The bids were very favorable for the city. The low bid was eighty-one percent of the engineer's estimate. The average was about eighty-five percent of the estimate. We feel that the bidding environment was obviously pretty competitive, that's why we saw good bids. I would also, the, so through the DOT process, you guys just need to award the contract tonight, and then contracts will go out through, through Bid Express, through the DOT project, and then that's pretty much the sequence of events, so. I would say we've worked with Blacktop Services several times. They did the last overlay job on East and West Tenth Street and Second Avenue West, or Second Avenue East, excuse me. They do a good, good job. We don't know who their subcontractors will be yet, because we haven't had any, not supposed to have any, any meetings with them until you guys approve the contracts, so. I would say, the other thing I would add is the CIP budget was eight hundred and thirty-five thousand for construction, so, so the number is well within the budget. Any other questions?
Thank you, Ross. Is this all, all city funds, or do we get a match on this with?
There is, this is, this is a swap grant, so it's four hundred thousand dollars guaranteed grant. There wasn't a match with the swap grant, so, so the city is actually reaping the savings in the project, so they're paying anything over the four hundred thousand, so the favorable bid really, really helps out the city.
Good. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Ross. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Five H is a motion to accept the Grand Avenue Commercial Historic District Guidelines as recommended by the Historic Preservation Commission and the Long-Term Planning Committee. First by Lauren. Second by Tom. Any discussion?
Just one comment, Mayor. I thought that meeting was really well attended and very informative, and there was a lot of people there from all walks of life that had a serious interest in that, and the grand monies involved in it are also important to the city, so I appreciate everybody's participation in that. It was a great, great event.
Thank you, Lauren. Ron, Jesse.
Yeah, I wasn't available to go to that meeting. Don, are these just guidelines, or who is going to enforce this? And, you know, I probably got, would've got that information at the meeting.
Yes, but it's, it's fine to emphasize, to emphasize that they are only guidelines. No one's going to force them. The city is not going to enforce them, but if any property owner or tenant is interested, there, there is a tool and a resource.
Okay.
And they'll certainly be encouraged to, to follow them, but there's no enforcement.
Thank you, Don. Any other comments or discussion? Before we vote, I'd just like to thank everybody for their time on this. This is a multi-year endeavor. How many years, Shreefer, do you think? Seven? Five? Yeah, five to seven. And there was a grant that came in, I believe, around eighty percent of the cost to finish the guidelines, and so what I think is really exciting about this program is that previously people would have to rely on the contractors or the construction companies to provide, you know, ideas per se on how to renovate the building, or, you know, change the frontage of the building, things of that nature, where now, a lot of that work has been done through a best practices guideline, and so it'll be a good resource, hopefully, moving forward. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Item five I is a motion to approve a funding advancement of not to exceed fifty thousand dollars for the Rocket Slide project from the Capital Improvement Reserve. I believe this was discussed at the Finance Committee a week or two ago, two weeks ago, maybe. Maybe Bill, after we do a first and second, Bill can maybe give a little update about the, what happened at the meeting. But with that, I would entertain a motion. First by Bill.
Second.
Second by Tracy. Discussion, questions on this?
Yeah, I have a question that Jared could answer. The, I, I thought that the group had raised about sixty thousand dollars, you know, and didn't they get, was the ten thousand that Space gave them included in that? Is that the seventy?
We apparently raised close to forty thousand dollars.
Just forty?
Oh, Jared, you want to turn? There you go.
Which is half of the total project. And so that, that covers the restoration portion of the slide, all the work that Alders has done and the Quadamarine has done. What we want to do with this funding, and we'll still try to go out and, after donations and things like that, people want to participate, you know, but we're going to try to, one, get the concrete footing to support that. We want the safety surfacing underneath, and then just to develop that site, to make it really, you know, appealing to users and safe and everything else. So, you know, things like some signage, donor signage, security lighting. We've talked with SMU on that stuff, so we have some numbers from them as well to, to light it up at night, so we don't have any, so we have reduced vandalism, things like that. So benches, some more signage, walkways around the slide, and concrete walkways to it, so people can get upright to it and enjoy it.
So Jared, this is an advancement, though. If, if the funds come up, that, the city funds will come back to the city, or how does that work, work in?
Yeah, so we'll, like I said, we'll still try to get as many donations as we can, but it's been a really good project where, you know, the citizens here have done a private and public community effort to have this Rocket Slide done, so, you know, they're having city funds in there, you know, just only enforces that relationship with the community.
Right.
Thank you, Ron. Any other questions or discussion? All right, do we know where they're looking at doing this yet?
So, well, what we're looking at right now is placing it in between the skate park and Miracle Playground. There's some green space there. It'd be just into that green space a little bit off of Fourth Street Southeast, so it'd be visible from that road. It's out of the floodplain. We're not going to put it back in West Leech, and then it's, and it's right next to one of our busiest parks in Spencer, so it'll get a lot of use and a lot of publicity off that road.
Thank you, Donovan. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Before we get to six, I see Eric Johansson is out there. He's done a lot of work in, on the project for a number of years, and is keeping it alive, moving the fundraising forward, and so we appreciate all your efforts with that.
I appreciate it. It's helped along the way. It's been quite a process. Learned a lot.
Item six, department head reports. A is the planning department. Alec.
Hello, everyone. All right. For the month of May, we issued thirty-four building permits totaling in eight million four hundred and seventy-seven thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars in valuation being put back into the city and projects. Two plumbing permits, five electric permits, and then twenty-seven of those were just normal building permits from fences to structures. On the nuisance side of things, we did receive twenty-four complaints. We posted eighty-one yards for grass, but we've only had to mow four of those, which is good. Other updates, the Building Services official position has been filled. We interviewed many wonderful candidates and are happy to announce that Adam Severson has accepted the position, and his first day will be June twenty-seventh, twenty-first, sorry. As you noted, the Historic Preservation Commission has pushed forward the guidelines that you accepted tonight. Over the month of May, it was Historic Preservation Month, and the HBC put on multiple presentations with various topics in regards to Spencer's history. They were all very well attended, and eventually those recordings will be available to the public to re-watch. And then lastly, with the help of the Spencer Fire Department and the Police Department, we conducted a substandard housing inspection for a multifamily residential housing complex. Code violations were noted, and the property owner was notified of these found issues. We'll continue to work with the owner to make sure the minimums are met. Reminder, the city of Spencer does not have a rental program requiring registration of rental properties or rental inspections. We do these inspections based on complaint or of noticeable issues from the road. Do we have any questions?
I have a question. I've noticed two instances around the city that I know where that is, there's probably an estate involved, someone has passed away, and grass has gotten out of hand. Do we, what kind of, are we doing any special communications to try to get to that family to make sure that the property is maintained? I know there's been a couple of cases that I've seen that it's, the grass has just gotten out of hand.
Well, right now, all we do is the stakes and posts for stuff, and that's, again, that's probably not enough to get in contact with folks like that. Those are probably the properties that do end up getting mowed by the city. If we have more information on what's happened, we can definitely reach out and try and figure out what their plans are with the property and go forward from there. It's just finding the information.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Any other questions for Alec? All right, thank you. B, library, Mandy.
Hello. Some news that we have, obviously, we're moving forward on the CIP HVAC, so we're very happy to have reliable heat and air conditioning in the library. We also have, I don't know, some of you might have, might have driven by and seen, we have a new book return underneath the portico, so, and I'd like to thank Mark White and the Public Works crew for helping us install that, so we really appreciate it, but it is not a garbage can, so please don't throw trash in it. So, that has been, you know, it's been an issue already, but you can return them there, you can still return them in the alley. We did this because sometimes the alley will get really icy, and we don't want anybody having to get out of their car and go, you know, we're afraid they might slip and fall out there in the alley, so we gave, we decided another option that was convenient for people as well, so. But we are ramping up, summer reading program is in full swing. One of the, some of the fun stuff, we're doing some outdoor stuff with the kids and the teens. The June seventeenth at two at One Oda Park, we're having mud puppies, so dress your kids in their grubbies and get their mud boots, and they're going to go play in the mud. And Treasure Village on July first is going to perform at the Banshell in East Leech Park, and that is at two P.M. And we still have our activity kits. There's a book giveaway day on June sixteenth from twelve to six in front of the library, so come get a free book, and that is ages zero to eighteen, so we've got plenty of choices for everyone. And there's an outdoor storytime on the eighth of June at ten o'clock, that's Dragons. Our tween book club is reading The Wonderful Wizard of Oz. You can call them to sign up. We have the teen book club as well, and they're reading The Grim Legacy. And the adult summer reading program activities are, if I can get my page to turn, because it doesn't want to. On June seventeenth at six, there, there's something to squawk about, which is a bird watching program. So if you want to know more about bird watching and how to get involved, you can go to One Oda Park and meet up with Brienne Blom, our Clay County anthrolist. We are also doing a book tasting for adults, so encouraging people to read out of genres that they don't normally read. So we have menus, and they are on the library website under Adult Summer Reading, or they're available at our front desk, so come in and get a book menu and try something new. Are there any questions? If you haven't signed up for summer reading, do it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mandy. Chief Canyon, Fire Department. And just a reminder, when, when everybody's up at the podium, so everybody at home can hear on SMU and Facebook Live and YouTube, I guess, make sure to speak directly at the microphone, and then it'll pick it up really well.
Hello.
That's fine.
Or you can speak low. Kneel down if you want.
Right on. Good afternoon or good evening, Mayor, as well as Council. Over the May month, your fire department answered fifty-five calls of service. They included fifteen fire calls ranging from air compressor in the middle of the night in the hospital, having a hydraulic issue, and it smoked up the entire basement. Working with hospital staff as well as fire staff, we were on scene for a few hours, rectified the situation. It went very well. Couple of dumpster fires, couple of car fires, a few false alarms. Our EMS division went ahead and answered over thirty-five calls with seizures, chest pain, difficulty breathing, overdoses, even some stomach pain, as well as some falls. Our in-house ambulance also answered fall, fall, as well as diabetic chest pain. Our training this month, or over the past month of May, was a very good and an intense training. CF Industries is closing down or having a cold wash, and they're going to be operating and rectifying one of their storage units. With that said, was, you know, how do we get somebody, you know, unstuck from in there as well as from on top? So we went ahead and utilized training with our Stokes Basket as well as our aerial, also did some really nice rope work as far as creating lowering systems and turning a lowering system into a raising system. And the old adage, Trace, if you remember, if you don't know it not, you tie a lot, well, now we have to get a little bit better and know what we're doing. Also, with a recent purchase with the Hospital of the Ambulance one oh one, we went ahead and did a update of operations and some of the new, new good methods that they have there as well. Also intended a emergency vehicle operating driving course, to, in other words, to be able to teach onboarding staff, as well as a few other train-the-trainer type of events for driving fire apparatus, as well as our fellow firefighting departments in the area. Our specials included, we were standing by for a monster truck event, and we also had the opportunity to drive a couple of local children to school after they won their escape drawing with, you know, driver operator Steve Grimias in their fire prevention work. drawing with, you know, driver operator Steve Grimias in their fire prevention work. And that's really about it. We did have a fire, if you haven't heard, the other day, last Friday night, ninety degrees, ninety degrees, a hoarding house type of situation, and these firefighters did a great job as long as with PD as well as, as well as the hospital staff. This is a problem. I think the heat is definitely going to be a problem for us. So, I asked the public out there, if you know of somebody, if you have a neighbor, please check on them once in a while. It'd be a good thing. You see a pet out, maybe if you can get some water to that pet, be conscious and more, more understanding of what's going on right now. We are going to be in this heat situation for a few weeks yet. And that's what the Fire Department's doing right now. Questions? Thanks.
Thank you, Chief. Item D, Police Department. Chief Warburton?
Month of May, the Spencer Police Department responded to one thousand one hundred and eighteen calls for service and performed sixty arrests. Today, we'd like to welcome Michelle Henderson. She is our new, latest dispatcher. Today was her first day, so she filled a vacancy left that was left by Kaylee Newton when she went to Hawaii, so we welcome her to the dispatch family. On May nineteenth, the high-risk entry and arrest team was in Spencer doing scenario training. The team utilized the fire tower with ammunition rounds, and they went out to the Clay County Fairgrounds to do vehicle extractions and open field search scenarios. On May twentieth, the Iowa Lakes Community College Criminal Justice Advisory Board met. The college made the board aware of the overall decrease in the number of students that are going through the Iowa Lakes Criminal Justice Program, not only with them, but statewide. And the reason I bring this up is this is going to have a trickle-down effect for us later down the line when we have vacancies. We may have to be a little creative on trying to draw some of the new applicants coming, going forward. Late April, early May, this town was canvassed for nuisance vehicles. Seventy-four vehicles were identified as part of the canvas. Letters have been sent out to the property owner, the owner of the vehicle, as well as the current tenant on the property. Lastly, just want to remind everybody as we're coming into the Fourth of July season that fireworks are still legal to discharge inside the city limits of Spencer. So, first-class consumer fireworks are legal to discharge. So, the question's going to become is what is first-class consumer fireworks? And basically, they're your firecrackers, bottle rockets, Roman candles, anything that's going to shoot a projectile in the air is going to be illegal inside the city limits of Spencer. The minimum fine for that is two hundred and fifty dollars. Time you add court costs and surcharge on there, it's three hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents at the minimum. So, I want everybody to think twice as they're shooting off their fireworks. Is it worth it or not? Is it worth three hundred and forty-two dollars for you? So, any questions?
I have one for you, Chief. I've seen three or four times in the last, over the last week, with the yellow flashing lights come on, South Grand and North Grand both, and they just blow through them. You want to address that again?
Yeah, so at the yellow flashing light, they have to yield to the pedestrians in the crosswalk. Once the pedestrians are through the crosswalk, they can proceed through the traffic, but they have got to yield to the people in the crosswalk. That is absolutely mandatory.
Does law enforcement have to witness the fireworks being?
Yes, we'd like to witness that. That keeps us, it's easier for us to go ahead and not be able to drag the person who called it in or vice versa into court, but it's not necessary. We can get signed statements from witnesses and actually do file that charge, so. But it's something that we try not to do. Any other questions?
So, Chief, going back to the yellow lights and the pedestrian, what is the fine and what are the charges that come with that?
Failure to yield to the pedestrians in the crosswalk is the actual code section. The fine amount, I'm not sure on that one. I'd have to do some checking on that one to actually get the fine amount to it, but I'm sure it's going to be well over that two hundred dollar mark or right in that, in that range anyway, time court costs and surcharge is done with it.
Thank you.
How much would it be for Ron?
Double, no.
Probably triple.
Public Works, Mark?
Good evening. The Street Division, we've started roadside mowing and airport mowing with the new tractor and mower. That seems to be working well, if you've seen it out. Of course, we've moved into Flag Fest preparation as well. That's pretty routine on the operations that we do. We keep a list that's just constantly evolving over the last thirty years and make a few adjustments every year and try to improve it. We did a little restoration work over at the courthouse when the time capsule was removed. That was kind of a neat project there. And piggybacking right along onto the yellow light comment, which the timing was perfect for that, we just got done installing the RRFB, which is Rapid Rectangular Flashing Beacon on West Eighteenth Street and Eleventh Avenue West. So, you'll notice a new one there. So, that's another spot for drivers to be aware of and take note and yield to the pedestrians. We've been updating the street ID signs throughout the community. That's an annual project that we'll do, just picking away at some of them. That's the green ones on the residential streets are slightly different style, but meet the regulations. I know it's kind of hard to believe, but we have had wet weather a couple times, and we did have some traffic light issues with some wiring on a couple of traffic lights that we've worked through on those particular intersections. But we did go back and pull the bases of every traffic light in Spencer, inspect the condition of the wiring and the insulation, and lubricated the bolts so they could come apart later for ease of maintenance and troubleshooting sometimes if they don't give trouble, and maybe you don't get into that area in quite a few years. So, that was preventative maintenance. Just as the seasons change a little bit, we always, our projects evolve every year. You can almost set a clock of what the ones we do. Spraying for thistles is part of it on roadside area. A lot of that's been completed also. Maybe you heard a little interview on the radio about mosquito spraying. That equipment has been calibrated and ready to go. The dry conditions hasn't created the need yet, but if we do get some moisture, make sure you dump those water containers and tires and type of things if there's anything on your property that helps. Mark Craig's been in the office, training with Craig Paulson, as Craig's starting to near his retirement date, so that's been, that's been helpful. They've done several sidewalk inspections along with a lot of routine Public Works projects. Over at the landfill, the fencing project's been completed. That was a CIP project. Stephen Clayton started May third, so if you see him, congratulating him on his new position. We have two college seasonals working at the landfill. There's a lot of litter and mowing and that type of projects that they work with. We also had a meeting with our consultant regarding water quality and test wells, so there'll be some other following updates on that as we move through that project. One thing I wanted to mention, the carpet that you see in this particular room is going to be replaced next week under warranty. No, we're not changing the color right away with a project that's only less than two years old, but there's a factory defect with it, with the edges curling up, and that's a no cost to the, to the, to the public. And like I said, it's a hundred percent warranty on that, and I decided to make that note, and I think I've bored you with enough, unless you have anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Parks and Rec, Jared?
Good evening again. Just kind of a trail update on those grants that we had talked about at previous meetings. I spoke with the DOT. We won't hear about those grants until early August, when they'll make their decisions. So, we'll be making some repairs out there that are necessary for safety purposes and stuff here soon. The other thing we're working on is, is trying to get, you know, all our parks, pool, campground, everything ready for Flag Fest. There's going to be a lot of events out there through the weekend, so doing some maintenance stuff, cleaning it up, trimming, making sure everything's looking nice there. Currently, we have an issue at the Aquatic Center with the pool heater. We're currently waiting on parts to make that repair. We usually keep our water around eighty-three degrees. Currently, it's seventy-five degrees, so still warmer than the lakes, but feels a little chilly when you're there anyway, so. We've also gotten some comments on the cemetery hydrants out there as well. We're currently searching for a water leak out there, so we're shutting off certain hydrants in certain areas out there. So, if you're going out to water, flowers, things like that, some of those hydrants in some of the cemeteries at Riverside will not work, so we'll keep you updated on that process if we find it and how that goes. The last couple of things, you know, the food truck event on Friday, a couple of weeks ago, had a really good turnout, thanks to all the trucks and the local band. She's with us for that event. We will be starting Yoga in the Park on June fourteenth. Again, this year, we're going to do it Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, eight-thirty A.M. to nine-thirty A.M. And then finally, Slug Fest was this weekend as well. We had fifty-four teams participate out at Patterson Park. Lots of people coming into town, lots of vehicles. It was really busy out there all weekend, so I just want to say thanks to the staff at the Parks Department and stuff, getting those fields ready, as well as all the volunteers that participated in Slug Fest and helped put that event on and make that happen. So, Tail Twisters, Tracy Small, Jim Horst, Steve Rhodey, those folks that really were the, behind that, that event. And then finally, thank you guys for the support to the Rocket Slide. That project's been, you know, coming up on a year in the making to try to make that happen since I've been here, but prior to that, it's been a long journey to try to get that, that piece of Spencer history up and, up and running, so we appreciate your support for that as well, so.
Thank you, Jared. Any questions for Jared?
We have one of the two.
It was nice to see campers down in the bottom section of the campgrounds, and it's good to see again.
I think that was the first time in several years.
Yeah. Great to see that.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Golf Course, Brian?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I think I've updated you with pretty much everything for the golf course on the weekly updates. I'd like to encourage the public that if they're interested in some of that information, they can visit our website, spencermunigolf.com, and go to the blog, or they can sign up for email updates on our website as well. The one thing that I would like to just visit briefly about, we had our golf board meeting this evening, and I brought up with them the really dry conditions from last year that carried over to this year, and then the lack of rainfall again. Every year, we rely a lot on our tiles to fill our irrigation pond in the spring, and we generally don't turn our well on until we get into the months, late June, July, somewhere in that region. And again, our water is all permitted by the Iowa DNR, so we are regulated to how much we can pump out of our well and pump out of the irrigation system. So, those tiles not running has kind of cost us a lot of, a lot of water, and we've been running the irrigation system quite a bit. It's not worrisome right now at this time, but if we do get to a situation where we have to start monitoring our water usage, then we will be limiting the amount of water that we put down on our fairways on the golf course at that time, just so you're aware of it now. So, if it does come up in the future, it could become an issue with our water permit, so I just thought I would share that information with you now instead of in a panic mode later. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Brian. H, HR Director? I'm visiting with Jessica over the last couple of weeks. Jessica shared a lot of the projects that she's been doing since she started, and I thought the council might be interested to hear more of a regular update as it relates to human resources and the investment that we chose to make in that position, being a full-time position. And so, with that, we've thrown Jessica in the mix on the Department Head Reports, and so here's her first one.
Thanks a lot for that, by the way. No, it's good to be here. Good evening. I wanted to update you real quick on the city manager recruitment process and where I'm at with that. You should have each received already the job description draft that I created using the Iowa City Code, and Dawn did give me some feedback already on that, which I appreciate. And I would like to suggest that we have a committee of the whole meeting to discuss that, as well as details on the contract and other salary-related items. So, I don't know if we want to schedule that now, or?
Yep. We have a couple more items that we can do. What's everyone's availability next week? Let's see, let me grab my calendar here. So, next week, Monday is the fourteenth, so it seems like, well, we've had meetings any, any night of the week. Is there a preference that you all have?
Mayor, I'm going to be gone next week for training, the whole week, but, you know, I'm...
Are you calling Monday night?
Yeah. I'm leaving Sunday, so, yeah, Sunday to Saturday, so.
Would you want to phone in at all? Do you want to move it two weeks?
I can, I can do that, because my classes will be over at three-thirty.
Okay. We can zoom you in, kind of like Star Trek.
Yeah, that'll work.
I'm free Monday night.
Prefer Mondays? Next Monday?
I'm good, whenever.
All right. Five-thirty or six-thirty?
Five-thirty.
Five-thirty?
Five-thirty.
Five-thirty? Next Monday, five-thirty?
It's a date.
All right.
All right. The other positions we have open right now, we have two open for street maintenance, and all others have been filled, so knock on wood with that. Any other questions you have for me? Silence in the room is golden. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jessica. All right. I, Attorney's Report, Don?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening again. Activity in April was what I would call routine and not of sufficient interest to bore you with it this evening. So, I thought I'd talk about a couple of other things that I know have been the subject of complaints to the mayor and probably to others, and I've given you handouts in regard to each of them. The first concerns signs, pennants, flags in the community, which many members of the community consider obscene. I think they've substantially reduced in number since last fall, but questions came, you know, why are we tolerating this? What can we do about it? And I, I explained that under the First Amendment and the rulings of the United States Supreme Court, that objectionable communication is protected by the First Amendment and, and is tolerated. What I handed out this evening is a letter, an article from the International Municipal Legal Officers Monthly Magazine. The city allows me to be a member of that organization, and so I have some comfort when some other attorney agrees with what I have to say, and that's what this article does, so I thought I'd pass it on for your information. Secondly, and more recently, and I believe the mayor will have more to say about this, I think we've probably, most of us have heard the train whistle at three A.M., and most of us who've heard that didn't enjoy it. So, the question has arisen, what, if anything, can be done about that? Well, there is a possible solution, but it is, it is time-consuming, complicated, and expensive. You can establish quiet zones, but you have to satisfy the Federal Railway Administration that you're maintaining an appropriate level of safety. So, I've given each of you information about that, and you and the mayor can decide if and whether you want to pursue that. An initial step is that there have to be flashing lights and gates at all crossings that are included in the quiet zone. And in Spencer, we have five such crossings, so we're talking about very substantial cost to get to the threshold of where you might have quiet zones. And in counting those five, I just, I didn't include West Thirty-second Avenue, because I wasn't sure you'd be worried about the whistles at that location. So, you have that information available to you, and you'll let me know if you want to pursue any aspects of that. I did find there are fifteen cities in Iowa that have gone through this process, at least to some extent, for some, if not all, crossings.
So, there's, there's five crossings that would have to be prepared with the alarms and the arms? The, the lights and the arms?
Yes. Five in the area that I assume you'd want to be included in, in the quiet zone, from Country Club to Tenth Avenue East.
Very good. Any other questions for Don? All right. Thank you. Item seven, Engineers Report. Ross?
Quick update, I believe the only construction that we have going pertaining to city projects is out at Westfield by AGL's First Edition. BD Construction has most of the underground work done out there. I think they'll wrap up this week. As far as paving, the lost construction has been paving the last couple of weeks out there and they've got about half of the paving work done. I believe they'll be gone for a few weeks towards the end of the week, but we'll probably finish that up later in the summer for that infrastructure work. Other fiscal year twenty-two projects that we still need to get out for bids and I expect to see coming out here in the next month or so would be the PD Parking Lot Replacement, West Leach Boat Ramp Replacement, Fairview Tennis Court Rehab, and the 2021 Water Quality Project. Any questions?
Maybe this is Jared's question. While the ramp is being reconstructed, will people have an access to get in or out of the river during that time?
Not at that current spot. So, we'd probably direct people to use access at Stollies or they'll have to just find a different access for the time being while we're under construction there for safety reasons and issues like that, so.
Gotcha. All right.
Thanks.
Is there any other questions for Ross? Go ahead and say that. All right, looks like you get to stay down, Ross. City, or should I say interim city managers' report, Brian? Nudge by George.
Thank you, Mayor. Don't know what to report on right now, but Kevin and I have spent a little bit of time talking about things, working through the transition and making sure we keep up with the projects and items that are in work. So, we've been working on that. We have a meeting tomorrow with for economic development, some, or projects and some ways forward there. So, we'll be working on that. Last meeting, we showed the rollout of our citizen portal this week. I was hoping to have it, but today was not the day it was gonna get done. But this week, if you go to our webpage, I'm hoping by Wednesday or so, you'll see a new link there for our recreational portal. And so, we'll give a demo of that, but that will allow people to make campground reservations, shelter reservations, sign up for yoga classes. So, we have to talk Jared on getting that registration there. We're working on getting the police fundraiser that they'll be having here sometime, or is that June or July, Chief?
It's the end of July.
End of July, so their special, or their fundraising they do for the Dare program. We'll have that registration out there. It's also a way to manage your membership passes, so both at the Aquatic Center and Golf Course. So, if you've got a seasoned membership, have not contacted City Hall to access your online portal, please do so. We can get that activated and then it'll allow you to manage that. Have spent quite a bit of time at the pool the last week or so getting their new software up and running. We're close, but still, we're about, we're at like the two-yard line and unfortunately, we keep moving back a half yard each day, so. But we're getting closer to getting that implemented and then we'll move that out to the golf course and the other departments. So, if you remember, about a year ago, we purchased a new cashiering module along with the Parks and Rec and Community Development. This is finalizing up those, that project. And then part of it is every location besides City Hall that takes cash will have a standardized cashiering system. So, we'll have that in all locations. So, we're getting close to wrapping up that project and I'll be happy, so. Otherwise, I don't have much else to report right now.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions for Brian? All right. Mayor's report, a couple items, as Dawn alluded to. First one is a good thing, had a phone call this morning from a citizen walking around Stollie Park. Called City Hall, went to my extension, which it forwarded out to my cellphone and she had nothing but glowing things to say about the way it's maintained. She appreciated the maintenance. Her son got married out there a couple of years ago and so she just wanted to relay her appreciation for the amount of time that gets spent out there by the staff. And so, good job Parks Department and everybody who contributes to that. The Department of Transportation, we can add to the committee of the whole discussion. I wanted to relay to the council, I received a letter from the Regional District Office Engineer for the state of Iowa with a concern about our sidewalk cafe program. He is requesting that we visit that discussion and that we need to be cognizant of the fact that number one, we're on a state right-of-way and there are certain laws and legislation that apply to that, especially as it relates to accessibility on the sidewalk. And so, I'll forward that communication out to you to review prior to the committee of the whole meeting. But it is something that's time-sensitive that we do need to discuss within the next week or two. So, we can add that to the agenda next Monday.
Mr. Mayor, am I right to consider if they're controlling any corrupt storefronts?
They do, yep. That's a good reminder, George. So, the right-of-way, and if I misspeak, please correct me, but the right-of-way for the state highways runs to the building, as George said. And so, if you read our ordinance related to sidewalk cafes, it does have a clause in there that says all, you know, laws shall be complied with with state, with city code as well as state law. And so, we've received some new communication that we need to visit as a council about and move forward with that. So, thank you, George. First Amendment, Dawn passed around some information regarding the viewing of obscenity, I guess we could say. And on the flip side of that, there's some other First Amendment things that we need to discuss, which we can also add to the Monday committee meeting dealing with freedom of speech, where speech can be delivered, and some alternatives or some decisions that we can make as a council related to that in our community. Railroad crossings, the backstory on what Dawn talked about. I received a question from a citizen about quiet zones. So, he had called the railroad and the railroad had directed him towards quiet zones. And so, he contacted me as the mayor. I requested to talk to Dawn, just if it was even legally possible. And so, Dawn did the research. It is, Dawn and I then had a follow-up discussion about should we pursue further conversation related to quiet zones. And I think we've all probably received enough interest from citizens about dealing with the noise of the train coming through. And so, at the very least, I think we can have an educated discussion about the options if we want to establish a quiet zone. There's lots of variables related to that, but as Dawn alluded to, it is legally possible. There are, what'd you say, Dawn, fifteen cities or so in Iowa that have done this process. And so, I would encourage the council that we need to discuss that. We had a request this afternoon from the Iowa Project. If you recall, a couple of weeks ago, we closed the alleyway from Grand to Behind Sisters Main Street Cafe there so they could do a outdoor, you know, tasting area, I guess we could say. And they would like to do that again this weekend. So, the good news is they'd like to do it again. The bad news is it takes council action to do that. And so, we can't take action on what we don't publish in the agenda. And so, what we need to do, if possible, is have a special council meeting this week. So, this would be probably the only item on the agenda. We would gather, we need at least four to have a quorum. And so, what we told the Iowa Project today is we would ask the council if it's possible to get a special council meeting and vote that request up or down. Is there any feedback or questions, comments?
Is it possible to just have a quick one right after this? Or does it have to be posted for how long?
Forty-eight hours.
Okay, so it'd have to be Wednesday at the earliest?
Twenty, is it twenty-four?
Twenty-four.
Twenty, sorry, twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four, so tomorrow night or Wednesday or?
Yeah, preferably like a Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Dawn?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, since we're talking about meetings and since you've, you had mentioned a couple of things for the fourteenth that probably require my attendance, I'm sorry to point out that the second Monday of the month is the one day a month.
That you can't?
I'm not available to you. So, maybe you wanna rethink that.
All right, does Tuesday work? So, pause the current conversation. Does Tuesday next week work for everyone? Is that okay? All right. All right. So, then circling back to the request by the Iowa Project, are at least four or more of you available this week to have a quick meeting?
I'm available.
All right? Wednesday? All right, you wanna?
Any time Wednesday?
Yeah, five thirty, work? Just do it early? You didn't get, okay, Wednesday, five thirty, we will have a special city council meeting regarding the request for the Iowa Project for this weekend for Flagfest. Can you send out all these dates?
Absolutely. I'll send one email tomorrow with all the dates and then I'll also send individual agendas for all the meetings that we set. Absolutely.
Can you throw in that phone number for me? It's a City Hall phone number.
Sure, you bet.
All right, thank you. As Brian alluded to, last week and today, we have met just to ensure that there's a smooth transition between the flow of information between the mayor and the city manager. Just wanted the public to know that, that we're working hard behind the scenes to make sure that every communication is smooth. And while Brian's in the room, he also still has the full-time job of Deputy City Manager and Finance Director. So, appreciate all of his efforts. Heat, I would echo Chief Conian's comments, not only just heat stroke, but sunburns. We had a little reminder at our house, our guy went to the pool. I told Jared, he's gotta turn down the UV rays at the swimming pool. He come home baked like a lobster and he's got second-degree burns. And so, you know, it'll, it can happen quick, something we don't necessarily think about. So, especially for all the kiddos who are outside, make sure that they're lathered up in sunscreen. Flagfest Hundred-Fiftieth, I see Sharifa's out there, so I'm not gonna steal your thunder, but don't forget that's this weekend. I'm sure we should probably talk about it later. And then, last thing I would just reflect on is my friend Clint Fraley passed away last week. If you knew Clint, he was the Clay County Conservation Board Director. And so, when I first moved here as a twenty-two-year-old, twenty-three, however old I was, Clint was, really became one of my mentors. And so, it was just a good reminder to me that we all need to take time to make sure that we, you know, either mentor someone or reach out to someone. We talk a lot about when people move to our community, are they welcomed? You know, reach out to the people who move here and become part of our lives and the community. And so, just wanted to relay that information. It was on my mind and so I wanted to share that. And with that, are there any questions? All right. Council committee reports?
We have, the twenty-first is our next regular scheduled city council meeting. We're also looking at sometime in the next two weeks, if possible, to schedule a Public Works Committee meeting. We have to talk about Seventh Avenue West Sewer Project. We talked to the council about a year ago or so about the streets, but there, we need to do some sewer work over there as well and just need to talk over that project with the committee and that. And then also, in continuation from the long-term planning, we had a couple of items from the last meeting after the historic preservation guideline discussion that we tabled cause we were hoping to have a full committee meeting or group there just due to the topics there. So, maybe if, if Wednesday, if at least one of the committees could maybe meet if all the, I don't know who wasn't gonna be able to attend, but if, you know, one of the committees, we can meet after Wednesday's special council meeting. At least that would take one of them out of the way and then the other one sometime in the next week or so. So, maybe, I think Ron, you're on Public Works?
Yeah, I was Wednesday.
So, is that possibly Wednesday to do Public Works?
Yeah, I would.
And then maybe next week, on long-term planning? Right, but long-term planning next week, maybe? Okay. But who else is on? I can't remember.
Public Works. No, it'd come this week.
Wednesday?
Well, this Wednesday.
Are you on, I know you're on that, Ron, and who else?
I think Tracy is.
Does it work for you, Tracy, after? Okay, it'll be hot anyway, we might as well be somewhere.
So, after our special council meeting, we'll do, follow that up with Public Works. And then Lauren and I will get together on getting a long-term planning for next week sometime, if you guys are available. I know that's, but Tracy and Tom, next week, pretty open for you guys? Okay, we'll let, we'll let you know and then we'll get those out.
Sounds good.
Then we can take, hopefully take action at the twenty-first council meeting on those topics, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Brian?
Does anybody have an idea what the outage was on last Wednesday morning at seven o'clock?
It was out, power was out for an hour. Didn't you have it out, Tom?
Downtown, my store did.
Oh, it was, it was, our street was all out too.
Didn't reach my house.
Oh, it did, ours. So, I just wondered what it was, it was a total hour that it was out. No, I'd never heard anything.
I do know there was a power surge because there was a couple of places, businesses I happened to be at on Tuesday of, or Thursday of last week.
This was Wednesday.
On that block, it was on Thursday, the day after. And I know there was one, one business had their main server fried and another one, half their lights didn't work, so. But the good news is they have it back.
Thank you, George. Brian, I got one. You used to mention something about economic development. You working tomorrow or doing something?
Not the committee, no. The mayor, myself, Alec, and Phil Christie and Steve Pick and are getting, and Lauren are getting together to just talk about SEDC a little bit and a couple of other items. So, yeah, not the Economic Development Committee.
Perfect. All right, anybody else? All right, seeing none. Number twelve, other opportunity to address the council, would anyone like the mic? Sharifa? Oops, sorry.
Better do that one or somebody's gonna be...
Moving too fast here. Item eleven, I would entertain a motion to approve the bills and claims. First by Bill, second by George. Any discussion? Donovan has a request to go line by line. I'm not sure that's gonna fly. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. You're outvoted, Donovan. Now, item twelve, Sharifa.
Good evening. I just thought I would let everyone in the community know that this weekend is Flagfest weekend. If you were not aware of that, my apologies. But we have been advertising in just about every place imaginable, from social media to area newspapers, trying to reach, I would say, sixty-to-eighty-mile radius. Several times on my way to visit family to the Sioux City and South, we delivered flyers. I even sent some with my dad to deliver to their community. So, they are out and about, radio ads will be hitting the radios this Friday, actually, starting about six-thirty in the morning. Just giving an extra little shout-out to all of those who have sponsored and supported the event. So, the mayor's gonna be there on behalf of the city, so I just wanna thank you again for your contribution towards that. Lots of developments is what we call them. Developments can be positive or negative, they're just developments and we figure them out. But it's gonna be a really great weekend and I encourage everybody to get out. There's gonna be something honestly for every age. So, with that, if there's any questions?
Just a, just a comment. In, in with the Hundred-and-fiftieth Celebration that's tied in with this, Gran Bridle was recruiting wedding dresses from years gone by and she's gonna have those on display in the windows downtown, which I think would be pretty cool. I know that Pete Redmond told me at church, I mean, this is going back for some of you a long ways, but his mom's is in there, my mom's is gonna be in there. So, it'd be really cool to see that, so.
Yeah, there really is not going to be any shortage of things to do and see. Opportunities to support our restaurants, there's also gonna be some food trucks out and about. So, something for everyone, certainly, so.
Sharifa? I just wanna apologize for sending out a challenge on the tug-of-war that scared everybody else out that they wouldn't sign up, so.
Cause they know you would've won, right?
Yeah, so I apologize for doing that.
That's okay. So, Donovan brings up a real quick point. There was a few activities that we did have to cancel due to lack of registration. You know, just something that we'll try again, tug-of-war, the firefighter water fights, and also dodgeball. So, we'll try them again. It's maybe just too much going on. We know there are some activities taking people from out of the area, so we'll try it again.
How does dodgeball not make it?
I know. And that's the only thing that's actually going to be air-conditioned. It's going to be at the, it would have been in the event center, so that's kind of a bummer, so...
Sharifa, would it be possible to get Donovan a ribbon or a medal?
Like a participation ribbon?
Yeah, I mean...
I think we won by forfeit. The two chiefs out there kind of bailed, too.
I'll see what I can do.
If we could find one.
I think we've got some kind of a trophy we can engrave some really nice names for you. I'll talk to you tomorrow.
Purple smoke.
All right. Yeah, so thank you, Sharifa. We appreciate the update, and I know it's
been a lot of work. Flag Fest Plus, as I think Bill alluded to, or Tom maybe with the 150th and a lot of, what time, when is the Time Capsule again?
Yes. So the Time Capsule, we have already lifted up. It was interesting. Thank you to Public Works for helping us out quite a bit. You know, there was a few developments. But the festivities on Friday will start at 5:00 at the courthouse.
Awesome.
Thank you.
What year is that from?
The Time Capsule, 1971. Yep. All right.
All right.
I wasn't.
Would anyone else like the microphone? Anyone else? Going once? Going twice? All right. I would entertain a motion to adjourn, first by Tom, and quickly seconded by Donovan.
But you lost control of this meeting.
It happens. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed that want to continue?
Aye.
Motion carries. Have a great evening.